I'd like to call to order this work session for the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. If we'll just go around and introduce ourselves, then we'll start with Jamie.
Jamie Burkhart.
And I'm currently between books.
Chris Harrison, and I'm listening to The Secret Letters by Margaret Peterson Haddix and reading Where the Lost Ones Go.
I'm Greer Carson, and I am also currently between books.
Kathy Loser, and I'm reading a book about empathy and compassion called Om, I won't pronounce it right, Omiyari? Om, it's a Japanese book, so.
But not in Japanese.
Hi, I'm Fred Reisinger. I have three books sitting on the shelf right beside my chair that I sit in a lot. And they're all three biographies, is the way I like to do.
All right, so tonight, the, really the only item on the agenda is some information regarding the compensation study. So they're going to share a presentation and proposal for us. So we'll start with Greer introducing things and move on to our guests.
Thank you, Chris. So a little over a year ago, we announced plans to conduct a compensation study in 2022. It had been over a decade since our last study was conducted, and we knew that our wage and salary schedule needed improvement. Our goals for this study included seeking ways to better align our total compensation plan with the public library market in order to be more competitive, seeking ways to better demonstrate the value of our current staff and to thereby help improve retention, understanding and addressing some of the cost of living challenges many of us face, and determining how the library can make meaningful improvements in net income for staff, and understanding what other workplace policies and practices are important to our staff and how we can make appropriate adjustments. We took a big step forward this past November by moving to Anthem for health insurance and thereby helping to create a more meaningful total rewards compensation package, which we knew was important to our staff. And based largely on their additional feedback, we're going to explore some more improvements related to flexible scheduling, hybrid work policies, and the available hours and roles for positions, the materials handler and lead materials handler positions in particular. Now we're looking to take another big step forward by adopting a new wage and salary schedule, one that not only improves earned income for our current staff, but we believe also puts us in a better position within the regional public library market. And most important of all, one we know we can commit to long term and even build on as the public library market continues to evolve. Since last September, we've been working closely with our partners at NFP to analyze market research and help develop a more progressive wage and salary schedule. Tonight, Abby Steele, one of our compensation consultants at NFP, is joining us via Zoom to present their findings and to share their recommendations for improvements. She will also be happy to answer any questions you have. And our internal working group, that is Josh Wolfe, Kyle Wickemeyer-Harty, Gary Letler, and Becky Throckmorton are also here to speak to specific aspects of our proposal. So with that, I'd like to welcome Abby Steele of NFP to the screen and ask her to kick off the presentation.
Wonderful, thank you, Greer. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
And then I'm going to get my screen shared here. Okay, and then just a thumbs up or nod if, are we able to see my PowerPoint screen as well? Perfect, lots of thumbs up, thank you. Thank you, Greer, for the introduction. So as mentioned, I am a compensation consultant with NFP. And we have had the pleasure of partnering with your organization over the last several months in the scope of both a total rewards and a compensation landscape. We have summary documents kind of completed from both pieces of that project, but definitely the focus of today is really just that compensation work. I'm going to quickly kind of walk us through what my hope in the agenda is for today. I am going to go a little bit quicker with some of these beginning slide decks here because there's some middle sections that I know are going to lead to some great discussion and potential questions at the end of the survey or at the end of the slide deck. So kind of from an overall perspective, when we engage with our clients, there are really five key steps that we want to make sure we capture with any compensation work. Steps one through three here, they're solely focused on the position itself. So we really start out by trying to get a really in-depth understanding of the role, scope of work, responsibilities that each position has. The people part of compensation is very important, and we bring that into the equation when we're looking at step four. So that's where we bring in your individual employees, their criteria, their salary information, into the equation to start framing up some recommendations. And then step five is really all about how we administer that program, how we roll it out. So things like implementation and communication. So we will take a deeper dive with each of these steps kind of in the next slides to come. So starting with that stage one of data gathering and sharing. So probably the first thing to mention is that we did not benchmark 100% of the roles within your organization. And that's a pretty common practice for most of our clients. So typically what we do is we benchmark what would be considered like key roles, roles where we know we need to collect that fresh market data, we're really looking for some good reference material. But it's very likely that you have internal positions, especially if they have relationships with other roles. So things like if you had an accountant and a senior accountant. Well, we often don't need to benchmark both of those. Some kind of common practice and internal equity understandings would say that my senior accountant should be placed in a higher salary grade level than my standard accountant. So we first identified which roles we did need to benchmark and which roles we could otherwise slot. So what that other term is on the slide here. Then we worked with your team to collect a variety of different sources of information. First and foremost, probably those organizational charts and job descriptions are really some of the most important. When we go out to our market sources and complete that benchmarking work, which is comparing your roles to the external market, we really base them on scope of responsibility. So making sure we understand compensable factors, things like responsibilities, risk associated with a position, education, experience that are required, things like that. So that's why job descriptions are so important. We also collected employee census information, and that especially helped us in stage four, again in that people analysis portion of the project. And then I'd be or miss if I didn't mention some of those total rewards pieces that we did. I know we did some focus groups with staff as well. So we reviewed things like handbook policies, those individual interviews with your focus groups. So those are all of the pieces that we collected. Moving into step two, so actually completing that benchmark work. So this is a very important slide, going to spend a little bit of time on this. Our philosophy and our compensation practice is there is no one magic number. So the more sources that we can pull in and kind of offset the pros and cons of each source, the better it's going to be for the outcome of our results. Up and bottom of this slide here is listed the five sources that we use for this project. So the ones with the logos, Comp Analyst, Comp Data, and Economic Research Institute. Those are really broad spectrum surveys. So they're very popular, they're very well-known, very robust, have been around for a long time. Comp Analyst is actually owned and operated by Salary.com. So some people are familiar with that, they have a little bit of a well-known name in kind of the public sector as well. I'm focusing in on, again, the library specific. We also pulled in the Allen County Public Library Salary Survey. It's one that you guys have historically participated in, and is actually one of the ones that had some of the most recent data collected and published. So that's one of the reasons, a couple of reasons why we use that survey source as well. And then last but not least, Salary Ordinances and Indiana Gateway, which is really just a public data source to collect compensation information. So we selected a few key areas, including some municipalities in the Bloomington area, as well as some other Indiana-based library systems where we could pull some additional information from those public sources. Okay, so in the previous slide, we talked about what sources we would be using for the project. On this slide, what we needed to determine is who is the peer group that we need to be comparing against. So by no means should you guys be competitive with the Amazons or the Googles or the Apples of the world. We need to focus on those compensable factors. So things like size indicators, revenue, operating budget. FTE, which stands for Full-Time Equivalencies within the organization, it's a little bit different than a headcount. A headcount is the number of individuals. A full-time equivalency takes into account a full-time workload. So typically, those numbers are a little bit different. And then on the left side of the screen, we see important things like industry. So again, you're not competing in the tech sector. We did want to pull in some very specific industries like education, government entities, libraries, the nonprofit and the nonprofit services sectors. Geography is a big one, so I know Greer mentioned some of the goals of the original project. We want to make sure that we are looking at data from within your local market. So we polled Bloomington and Indiana, if Bloomington was not available in some of those sources, but also did what's called geographic differentials. And that's where we can compare specific municipalities. So we took a look at what's the difference between Bloomington and Indiana, between Bloomington and the national average, and how do all of these different municipalities interplay with one another. The last piece to mention on this slide, so if we take a look at the data effective date over to the right-hand bottom corner. Again, we used five different sources for the study, and they all publish and collect their data at different times throughout the year. So some of those sources, they may publish fresh data twice a year, some may do it monthly. To make sure that we can account for that difference and be comparing apples to apples between the survey sources, we wanted to identify a single point in time to which we could say all data is going to be effective as of X date. So for this project, we established the start of 2023, so 1-1 of 2023 for that date. But note, that is not necessarily the date that we're talking about for individual adjustments for employees. So that's slightly different, this is just the effective date of our data collectively. Okay. Moving on to our next slide here, so again, a little bit more in-depth when we talk about that benchmarking work. I mentioned job descriptions are very important. So we actually don't base benchmarking on titles alone because what you may call a position could be very different even from a similar organization and what they call a role. Material handlers jumps out, I've worked with several libraries over the last year, year and a half. And I know that materials handler position, even though that's what you have it termed, could be called something different in other library markets. So we're really focused on scope of work responsibilities, the skills that are needed for a position, as well as experience or other certifications and education requirements. This slide here is taking us back to some high school stats. I won't spend too, too much time on here, but it is important to understand that we are talking about percentile data. So we, when we collect information from these survey sources, we typically are pulling three different levels of percentile data. That would be the 25th, the 50th, and the 75th. And percentiles really relate back to medians, not averages or means. So the reason we try to avoid using averages and means when we can is really to mitigate the amount of impact that an outlier can have on our final results. So for example, if there was a participant in a survey source that had very high or very, very low compensation compared to the rest of the group, that injury could actually sway that data one way or another. So by pulling in medians and percentiles, we avoid that impact that those outliers could have. Okay, and what we have in front here is really just an example of what some of that benchmark data looks like. So this is not from your study, this is just a blanket example that we like to include. But you can see we include your position's information. That's going to be some of the text-heavy portions up at the top and on the left side. So we'd be looking at the job title, really key excerpts from your job description, again covering those responsibilities and skills that are needed. And then in the upper right-hand corner, we have kind of our overall summary data. So that's going to report back for us those percentile datas, what's coming in at the 25th, the 50th, and the 75th. The dark green bar that goes all the way across the screen, so that's the start of a survey source. So this example here is for Comp Analyst. Again, your benchmark data actually has several of these data sources that continue down in an Excel file. This is just a snapshot of what that would look like, kind of just to put in front of you to visualize. Okay, our next slide here is really hitting to an important topic. So cost of labor and cost of living. I know it's a really big, important piece for you guys as a client and was a big indicator for the start of the study. And I apologize, I have a train that's getting ready to come by really quickly. I'm going to go on mute for a second so it doesn't hurt your ears. Okay, apologize about that. So this is one of those slides where we want to spend a little bit more time. Cost of labor and cost of living are sometimes terms that are used interchangeably, but they really represent different things. So when we think about cost of living, that's kind of the more common term that we hear. That's really representing kind of the difference in some personal lifestyle choices, as well as what's happening economically. So my little kind of bullet in the middle of the screen here, when we compare that to cost of labor, which is typically a little bit more standard, and that really represents the difference between the supply and the demand of labor costs within your local market. So how much do we need to pay to hire and to retain kind of our top talent? So those are the differences between those two kind of different breakouts. Again, my call out here in the middle, if we think back historically, so kind of prior to pre-pandemic, if you will, we really didn't have much of an increase in terms of inflation, right? So inflation was not changing greatly from year to year. I know that's not the case right now. But we were still seeing wages on average rise about 3% annually. And that's, that's kind of an attrition to the cost of labor rather than just looking at inflation and the cost of living. When we think about cost of labor and cost of living, so cost of labor is really something that you should have absorbed into the framework of your compensation strategy and your program. So those are things that you use to make determinations for, where do we want to compete with the market? Cost of living differences are typically what are used when you have things like a relocation for an employee. So an employee moving from maybe New York City to Bloomington, Indiana, what should that difference look like for that employee? And I think we have a couple of examples to take a little bit of a deeper dive into the difference between cost of labor and cost of living. So here we have kind of a chart that breaks out in a couple of different ways. So cost of labor, essentially this is telling us at a $50,000 salary level in Bloomington, Indiana, what would that salary level need to look like in these various other destination locations to be competitive at the same level that $50,000 is within Bloomington? So my middle two columns are telling me both that percent difference between Bloomington and the destination place, as well as what the dollar figure would look like. So $50,000 within Bloomington. If we cast out a wider net and say, what does that look like just within the state of Indiana? It's about a 3.4% increase, right? Which would look like $51,704 to be competitive. What we can see kind of oppositely is there's also a difference in terms of cost of living. So the cost of living from Bloomington to Indiana comparatively is actually a lower percentage. So it's not above 100%, it's at 96.7%. On average, for most of our employees, we recommend taking a look at those geographic differentials, really when we start breaching the point of about a 5% difference. So when we take a look at Bloomington, and mainly some of those kind of common areas where you have other municipality libraries of a similar size, so places like Evansville, Fort Wayne, Greenwood, Indianapolis, for example, we're really not stretching beyond that 5% average. To give you a little bit more of a kind of drastic example, we also included some larger metro areas, so Chicago compared to New York. Again, cost of labor, if you were to look to attract talent within New York City, you're looking at around 35.5% versus that cost of living is obviously drastically higher. So again, cost of labor needs to be the basis for our decisions in terms of compensation strategy and philosophy. But cost of living is still something that's important to keep track of. And what I have in this slide here, again, really knowing that that local municipality within the Bloomington market was something that was important to address in the study. And we also pulled just some publicly available data. This is actually off of job boards. So our team went through and kind of combed job boards where they posted what that base compensation level is for current openings, what the title is of that work, as well as what organization was going to be paying that rate. So this is important to note that this data is not necessarily valid, it's not the most reliable. It's public data sourced from those job boards. So it doesn't really paint a full picture for us. Kind of one drastic example of what I mean by that is, if we look at maybe an entry-level role, our very last example here of a warehouse associate with town tasks, paid $18 to start. Well, your organization doesn't really have a position that equates directly to a warehouse associate. That's a very physical, labor-demanding role. Even though it's entry-level for that organization, that doesn't equate on a one-for-one basis to your materials handler. So again, this is just a snapshot of what's happening with entry-level rates in the Bloomington market that we thought was important to include. But this is not necessarily the basis for our study, it was really more of a supplementary resource. Okay, so at this point in our work, we've collected all of our market data from those five sources. We have vetted it, we vetted it with your HR teams to make sure we felt comfortable and confident in our matches. And now we're going to translate that into what that should look like for a salary structure. Or to use your terminology, how should your salary schedule be updated? So we really take a two-factor approach when it comes to salary structures. First and foremost, and why we do these studies is external competitiveness. So that's really making sure from an external perspective, we're hitting those equity values with the market. Salary ranges, we did actually several models. We landed on a model where the midpoint of our salary ranges are going to be based or aligned on or just above the 50th percentile of the market data. So that 50th percentile is kind of seen quote-unquote as that market rate. So about half of organizations and participants would be paying above that rate, and about half would be paying below. The second piece, and equally as important, is really addressing internal equity in a job evaluation process. So this steps allows us to place into the salary structure some of those non-benchmark roles. So again, going back to my example of an accountant and a senior accountant. It also takes, allows us to take a step back and say, does this structure make sense for what our internal hierarchy needs to represent? Do we have appropriate spacing between supervisors and employees and between those supervisors and their directors? So that's really the second step or the second approach to creating the structures. And finally, we kind of want to make sure everything holistically makes sense as well. So again, I already mentioned the third bullet point on here, adding in those positions where we didn't complete the benchmark data, making sure everything is easily administered. So does the spacing between all of our structure steps make sense? Does it match where we want to align to our pay philosophy? So we just do a triple check of all of those different pieces. And now that we've wrapped up kind of the final evaluation on the role itself, we then start bringing the people into the equation. So one of the first questions we need to address is really, what's our philosophy behind and how employees will progress through this range of pay? What we've determined kind of in discussions with the leadership team here is really one of the most important factors is tenure. So when you look at the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum values of the range, employees that are typically newer to that role or to the organization, by newer to the role, that also means someone who's recently promoted. We would also expect to see them, as well as new hires, closer to the minimum value within the range. When the employee starts developing the skills needed to be fully proficient in the job, so there's no longer really a large learning curve. They're able to come in, fully execute all aspects of their job without additional assistance. Normally, that's around about a five-year point in terms of years of service, but that could vary depending on which level of kind of professional staff position we're talking about. So mid-tenure typically would expect to see them around the midpoint of a structure. And then on the opposite end, the maximum, so that's where we would expect to see highly tenured, fully functioning employees. So your employees that have been in that role for a very long time would well expect to see them above the midpoint of their salary range. A couple really key decisions that we've highlighted as part of this process. New hires really should not be brought in below the minimum of a range. Again, generally, they're hired somewhere between that minimum and that midpoint. Again, just really kind of depend on what types of experience that they're coming into. So that's kind of that second bullet point, additional considerations for new hires that have that direct-related experience. And then our second bullet point here, current employees, again, highly tenured staff, fully functioning in the role, we would expect to see them above the midpoint. So we wouldn't expect to see them where those new hire employees are based. And then step five here, again, talking about that administration, the implementation pieces. So this presentation is definitely part of that. And we've worked closely with your HR teams in trying to kind of finalize some different modeling in terms of where employees should be placed within that range, finalizing some compensation documents as well. And then we've come to just a few observations and recommendations. So first and foremost, we are recommending an organization-wide rate adjustment. I know historically that's been called a COLA, which typically stands for Cost of Living Adjustment. Our practice doesn't love that language, but if that makes sense for what you guys have used historically, I would recommend continuing with that. So we are recommending that kind of across the organization. Step two here would be prioritizing bringing as many employees as possible. Taking a look at some budget numbers, we think that is definitely doable, to be within the range, but also to be within the range where they should be based on those tenure understandings. So we want to mitigate the amount of compression that we have. So again, we don't want new hires making very similar rates to people that have been there for five, seven, 10 years. We want to make sure they're placed appropriate within their full scope of range. Step three, we very much recommend continuing to review that as part of an annual process and continue to budget for additional equity adjustments as needed. So again, making sure that employees are paid correctly based on that tenure scope, on where they should be within their range of pay. And then last but not least, we recommend for all of our clients, when you actually take a look at that salary structure, so that structure itself should last you about three to five years before we would recommend doing another deep study like this one. Within those three to five years, though, you want to make sure that you're staying on top of what's happening with market trends. So every fall, we give a presentation where we're letting our clients know what that market movement is looking like. This past year, that was looking at about a 3.5% movement. So we would recommend aging your structure every year, or at least reviewing if that's needed, again, based on what's happening in the market to account for things like inflation costs. And that wraps up the presentation, so I will leave this up just in case there's questions directed to a specific slide number, but I'm happy to address any questions now.
I have a question. When you gathered up your data, did you do any kind of historical look at what MCPL employees are getting in terms of, you know, like the market movement percentage points that you were talking about? Did you evaluate how we stood in terms of our ability to match up the market movement?
Yeah, great question. So I'm happy to take that. So typically, when we start with that data gathering stage, we actually, I, our practice wants to avoid seeing your current practices and protocols until we finish that benchmarking work. So we don't want that to impact the results of the data that we've collected. So it wouldn't be until after kind of that step three where we would evaluate those. And we did, so we took a look at current salary schedules historically, what that movement had looked like as part of the full analysis. So yes.
And what were your conclusions to that?
Yeah, so some general observations. Let's see, I think there's a few that stick out in mind. Your previous salary schedule had very wide ranges. So when we look at the difference between the minimum and the maximum, for every grade level, it was very, it was very wide, which is a little atypical, normally for more.
Could you explain wide to me? What does wide mean?
Wide, so for a standard kind of entry-level position in a salary structure, I would say most organizations start around 25 to 30%. So a 25 to 30% spread from the minimum to the maximum. I believe you guys were somewhere closer above 50, almost 60%.
Okay.
And that was the case, you were that wide kind of across all of your grade levels, if you will. What's more typical of a structure is more of a funnel shape, where ranges at the highest. Where ranges at the highest point, so your top leadership are wider. Um, and they get a little narrow as you work your way down to more entry level positions.
So in a quick summary, we haven't really been keeping pace with the market movements of employee compensation, is that correct?
Yes, I would say, um, especially on your previous salary schedule where we were at about grade six and below. That was, that was probably more significantly below where I would, I would have expected to see it.
Thank you.
So when we're talking about um, wage and uh, the new wage structure. Um, and uh, moving everybody, um, I guess, increasing everyone's salary. Um, in the past, you know, everyone's gotten like a flat three percent increase. Would this new structure then mean some people would get more than three percent or some people get, yeah, I mean, I'm just using three percent as a, as a benchmark? But again, some people's.
Add to that?
Yeah.
I think what you're saying, because I thought the same thing. So I think what we're looking to do is.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I want this clarification too, is to move everybody onto this structure initially. Which could be different percentiles across the board.
Yes.
But then in the future, like we have done previously, doing the, the move altogether.
Yes.
I just want to clarify that that's.
Uh, yeah, I do, that's what I was, thank you.
Yeah, so um, I think the short answer to that is yes. Um, so there is kind of an underlying, um, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to share with that estimated percentages now. But we do have kind of that underlying recommendation for an increase overall for, for everyone. So no one would dip below, in your example, that three percent increase.
Okay. And no one would come out less, right? Everyone, it will be positive for everyone.
And I, I think, I think it's okay for us to share this because we've put this out there publicly and shared it with staff. What we're talking about, our, our usual cost of living adjustment is two point seven five, seven five percent or seventy five cents an hour, whichever is greater. In adopting this, we would be applying at the minimum a five percent cost of living adjustment and then going from there.
But again, everyone's percentage increase is.
Increases by a minimum of five percent, which would be seventy five cents an hour or greater.
But not necessarily just at that amount.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's possible that the people that are at the minimum. The people that are the, at the mid level and the people are at the high level, the ranges are gonna be different in terms of percentages.
That's correct. And, and similarly, there are people who are at the lower end and would still be at the lower end who have been here five, ten, fifteen or more years, who should be further along within the pay scale or within that particular pay grade.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to see someone new coming in, getting more than someone who's been here five years.
That's the compression problem that we've had for quite a while.
Yes.
Yes.
And so that makes sense that, again, that the increases for everybody would not be necessarily the same percentage amount.
Right.
Okay, and I think.
And if you could elaborate on this, the communication piece um, is very important to relay how we came up or how the compensation study is going to balance, is that the right word? The new.
And be equitable.
Yeah, and be equitable, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So that communication for internal equity is abs, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second so I can see you guys a little bit more clearly. I can always pull that back up if I need to. Um, but yeah, you're absolutely right. So the communication on the internal equity really needs to come down to what's that individual employee going to see? How is their pay going to be impacted, right? Compensation is a very sensitive subject, rightly so, it should be. Um, and so we have started to put together the, the framework of what those individual adjustments, what recommendations would be. Um, and have some, some framework again to the logic of why targeted increases for employees that have been with the organization for many years, why their percentage may be a little bit larger than just above that five percent.
How much are other um, benefit, um, benefits calculated into besides uh, like overall compensation, um, beyond wages? I mean, you know, the, the health insurance and time off and things like that.
Yeah, great question. Um, as kind of the underlying denominator and the background for just the compensation study, we actually take the benefits piece out of the equation. So we want to make sure we're strictly comparing that base salary figure between all of the survey sources. Where we want to bring in the evaluation of your benefits piece back into the equation is really that determination on where you want to align as an organization to the market. So again, that fiftieth percentile. One of the recommendations we have, um, and I think it may be included in that PDF summary document um, for almost all of our clients, um, is to consider doing what's called total um, reward statements. Where you bring in the evaluation piece of those benefits, um, plus the compensation. So the employee can really have a full understanding of all of the total rewards offerings within an organization.
And I'm sorry, you said that was mainly for um, new, new hires, the, you would present that to?
That would be for everyone.
For everyone, okay.
Now, for some clients, we actually help support that need on an annual basis. So normally, like typically, you'd get a total reward statement in January for the previous year, once kind of all of your books have cleared. Um, to where you can see what that breakout is between the evaluation of benefits. So how much did I receive from my healthcare, um, from the medical coverage, from dental? Um, things including um, time off should probably also be included in that assessment.
So you're using the word rewards for all the non sa- salary kind of benefits, correct?
Yeah, so total rewards literally includes all of those benefits and perks as well as compensation. So it's kind of the bigger picture of all of the offerings that you have as an organization.
So a, as in a dollar figure, so yeah, so that would be your total rewards, the benefit of having a flexible schedule and or a.
So Chris, my, my husband's work does this. And so what it does is it says like, last year, you went to the doctor this many times and they would have charged you this much. But with your insurance, you've saved this much money, so it makes us look rich.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Right.
It's, you know, like saying like.
At Kroger's, tell us how much you saved.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, like.
Yes.
Well, it's kind of what we do with the library checkout, like, you know, you, you've, you've used these books here, like how much money it saved you.
Yeah.
So it, it's kind of just showing you um, an additional benefit of being an employee.
Right.
With the organization.
And it's really important for us, like, for all public libraries to emphasize that. Because obviously, we're not gonna be able to compete with the private sector, we're never gonna be able to compete very widely in terms of that income. And what really matters to people and, and why a lot of people get into doing library work is because of a lot of those additional sort of total rewards pieces. So it's important for us to create that narrative and, and to deliver it consistently. So people really reflect on what is it that I'm getting out of working here beyond making an impact on the community and enjoying working with my colleagues and getting professional development and so on. Is that there are all these other benefits to working at a place like MCPL above and beyond that income.
So great, is that something that MCPL is considering doing?
Very much so.
And that falls on to the HR department?
Uh, that's, that's administration across the board.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've been talking about.
So it's a hundred and fifteen people that you're gonna do a reward statement for every year?
I'm, I'm not gonna turn around and look at Kyle and Becky on that one, but yeah, more or less. And it's more like a hundred and seventy.
Oh, a hundred and seventy, okay. It, it, I, I enjoy saying those.
Yeah, they're meaningful.
They are meaningful.
I, I do think it's a positive thing to remind people, you know, you, you're getting more than just a salary. That, that there's more to the job than, than just the salary. I mean, salary is important, but there's other things too.
Abby, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions I can help address specific to the compensation work?
I just want to say, I appreciate the presentation. I thought it was very clear, very easy to read, very easy to understand and, and well put together. So thank you for your time for that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it as well. Your group has been absolutely wonderful to work with. Every library client I have had has been wonderful to work with, so you guys were no exception. I believe you all should have my contact information, so if there are any follow up individual questions I can help address, please don't hesitate to reach out. Um, and I appreciate the time this evening to present our findings.
And NFP in general, but Abby in particular, has been remarkable in going above and beyond and working with us and very patient. Because there's been no shortage of last minute questions, requests for Zoom meetings and so on, so thank you, Abby.
Absolutely. Thank you, Breer, and thank you to the whole group and to the board, and everyone have a great evening.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns that we need for any of the staff to address? Okay, seeing none, we do have time for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to come forward and address the board? Seeing none, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry.
All in. Oh, okay.
Oh, we do have someone.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead and state your name and um, if you'll please stick to the three to five minutes for your comments, we'd appreciate that. And uh, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Jack Berry. I'm a materials handler at the library. Um, and um, for a really long time since before I worked here, materials handlers have been fighting for a living wage. Um, and this proposal has been a really like, big disappointment to us. Um, since it quite explicitly leaves the entry level and a lot of the like midpoint levels like still below a living wage. Um, I know that I personally felt really frustrated reading about the cost of living being a personal choice in this proposal. Um, because uh, maybe that feels true for people who are making already a living or even a thriving wage. But for those of us who are not, like, the choices that we have available to us are more along the lines of like, can I buy groceries this month or will that mean I can't make rent? Um, so for that to be kind of dismissed, I think is like, really awful for morale in the lower pay grades. Um, I think it's pretty wild that up until I think pay grade one ten, not a single entry level rate is um, above the city of Bloomington's estimate for what a living wage would be, which is fifteen twenty nine. Um, and that, mind you, is a, an estimate for a living wage, which is like getting by money, not thriving money. Um, so I will say that I know that me personally, and I think a lot of my colleagues as well in these lower pay grades feel like really disappointed and like, very upset about the way that this proposal has been made. Um, and it feels like it's been made clear to us that soliciting, soliciting our feedback about like what we need and what would make this job sustainable for us has been a bit of a, um, frankly, a charade. Um, and I don't really expect for this feedback to be taken to heart, but I will say that I hope that this proposal does not get accepted as it is. It is really, uh, really bad outcome for those of us who have been advocating to make again a living wage, which is not asking for the moon. Um, so yeah, that's my two cents. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public to, that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion already on the table to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you.